We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to first read through the protocol that we have for listening sessions. For those of you who want to sign up in the future, this will share how and then what to expect tonight. If you wish to discuss issues with members of the school board and district leaders, you will be able to do so at the listening session. Please sign up to speak at a listening session 48 hours in advance by submitting the signup form online or calling the district office. This ensures we have the appropriate staff members on hand to answer questions and address concerns. The listening sessions are designed to create a more informal setting for residents to engage in conversations with district leaders about issues or concerns. Representatives from the school board, along with the superintendent and other district leaders, will be available during the listening, during the session to discuss issues with you. A summary of topics discussed during the listening sessions will be shared with the full board and the viewing audience at each school board meeting. Depending on the number of forms submitted, the facilitator may need to set time limits to ensure all topics are addressed during the listening session. Tonight, we have four speakers that will be given 10 minutes each, and you can use those 10 minutes however you want. If you'd like to talk for one and, and then open it up for discussion for the rest, or if you want to talk for most of the time, that's up to you. If many persons wish to speak on the same topic, the board members present may ask the spokesperson be designated to allow more time for discussion. While comments and questions on issues are welcome, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in public meetings. Please forward comments regarding individuals to the superintendent. If additional conversation or follow-up is necessary, the superintendent will direct a staff member to contact you. And our first speaker tonight is Carl Blondin.
Thank you. Race is a difficult topic in America, quite frankly, because we have a very bad history with it. With the recent political controversy in ISD 834, we have seen an unfortunate spate of racist comments by a particular faction. The nature of those comments leaves no doubt that the makers of those comments are intentional in their animosity, and that there remains in our community, deep-seated racial prejudices and hatred held by some people. Not only have those comments hurt adults, those comments have hurt our students. As a white male, I cannot pretend to be an expert on racism, but I am a father. I'm a father in a transracial family, and I have seen those comments cause harm to someone I love. Shelley, you're in a position of leadership. What are you going to do to stand up for our students of color against these people who bring these comments into the public, harming our children?
I think you'll find that that's something I always want to keep at the forefront. And I don't know which comments specifically. I've stayed out of most of the social media because it's been so difficult.
Our students see those comments in social media. We are the adults. We have a responsibility. You're a leader. What do you propose we do going forward?
I think that's a conversation for the whole board and the administration to actually have a plan for going forward, because I don't think it's going to go away without a plan.
I heard a lot of bad things 50 years ago, over 50 years ago, and this is just as bad. I've worked hard to try to create an environment, positive environment, for my children. And there are people in this community, and you are in charge of the education here, and there has to be an effort to bring home to our students the harm that is caused, the particular harm that is being caused not only to adults, but to children in our system from people who are involved in issues with this school, district. I want to see positive action. I don't want to hear about committees. I don't want to hear about plans. I want to see something.
I agree.
Thank you.
Next, we have Allison Sherman.
Hopefully, I don't cough too much. I have a cold, so bear with me here. First, I guess I'd like to add on to what Carl said. I've read, and I've kind of been exposed to both via just on social media and just posts and different things of that nature. And I don't want to pretend that there's any one group that's responsible for the hateful language that you can't deny is out there. Both racial and socioeconomic comments have been made. I mean, it goes beyond racial statements, calling one part of the community, you know, that we're trying to up test scores to, so that the, you know, quote-unquote, "not as smart" children can have, you know, we can improve schools. It's been very hurtful. I mean, so to me, there's kind of that classism and also the racial component here. Again, I don't want to, I want to make it very clear that I hold those comments accountable to the person that made them. Their names are tied to it forever on social media and wherever they're found, and I think we can only hold those people accountable. I've seen a lot of people apologize for comments, and I think that's, that's all well and good. But I hear a lot of like, I've read a lot of comments like, you know, "you shouldn't have to deal with those comments, but..." And I guess I just want to take "but" out of it. And it, it makes me angry, like I get shaky angry at it, because there's no but. It's just, "I'm sorry. It shouldn't have happened once, let alone, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens of times." And that should be it. And I want to see that even though these comments aren't attributable to any one group, I'd like to see a more public denunciation of them. If you see something online, you know, make a post right then and there that says, "I don't agree with you. That's insulting. Please stop." I mean, I keep going back, and I've reread and read our own students' bullying policy. And the things that are being said and that are going on right now, there would be suspension, there would be discipline to our students if they behave this way. And I'm just throwing this out for conversation, and I certainly agree with Carl, too. I don't want to see committees and, I mean, this is just hate is hate, and it's wrong, and end of discussion. But perhaps we can, as a community, bring adults in more actively into our bullying policy. How are we expecting to, you know, we can't expect our children to have, to live one way, and our adults can then talk and speak to each other in a completely different way. So I guess I wanted to kind of throw that out there. And again, I just kind of want everyone to admonish it if they see it. It's not enough to say, "I'm sorry," you know, "but." Secondly, I wanted to, I had a hard time, going back to BOLD, I guess, which, I had a hard time initially supporting BOLD, and that's where I netted out after me personally, my personal opinion, after looking at the facts and evaluating the experiences that my family have had and talking to other families. I think that I was quiet in my support initially, because to be honest, it's a sad, sad thing to see schools close. Like, my heart breaks for these communities. And to come out, and I think why many, many people have been silent, silently supporting BOLD, is simply for that fact. So I guess I just kind of want to get that out there, that I just want to see the community, we can agree to see the situation differently, but I don't think it needs to be personally attacking one another. And I respect your two votes. I respect the five other board members' votes. However, now that the vote is done, I want to see the board lead our community in a positive direction. I'm personally looking to the board to try to kind of prevent some of the divisiveness that is continuing after the vote. And it, really, we need to come together. It's, it does no one any good to see this plan fail, now that the board has spoken. And I've been at many, many board meetings, and I know this isn't the first time the board has disagreed. I mean, we've sat through budget cuts and arguing. I've watched you guys debate and argue over certain things, and, and so I know that you have the ability to lead everyone in one direction, a unified direction. And I know there's going to come a time and a place where we can all, you know, probably in November, people can come out, and they can run for, you know, board positions, and we can handle it the Democrat, through the democratic process, I guess. But right now, I think the decision has been made, and I just implore everyone, board members that aren't here as well. Another thing I guess I wanted to talk about is I'm concerned about the pending litigation that has been discussed within the district. And I guess I would like for confirmation, but I had heard that the district's insurance policy doesn't cover litigation. I don't know if it's just litigation like this, or that if, if this moves forward, that it comes from the general, fighting it would come from the general fund?
Much of it, pieces of it are covered, but not most of it is not.
Okay. And it would come from the general fund, no other source? So it would come, my understanding with the general fund, I mean, that's directly supporting our kids, our schools, teachers. And so for me personally, again, my own personal opinion, I would just, I would like to see all of our board members out there not supporting something as divisive as litigation, and again, going back to the kind of a unified front. Lastly, I, one thing that I can look at, I guess, from a positive perspective here is that I've kind of been through board meetings now for a while myself, and, you know, kind of sit in empty rooms and not a lot of engagement, and I'm sure people are watching at home, but, but they're just, I hope that the level of engagement that we've had, I mean, I look at that as a positive. I think it's maybe gone a little too far and intense and negative, but I think once we step back now and we can move forward, I hope that everyone stays involved. I hope that, you know, I hear a lot of people considering running for board. I think that's all a positive thing. And I just, I guess I want to see a continuation from the community staying involved. And then lastly, I would be remiss, and I'm, this is personal for you, Mike. As a parent of Lake Elmo, I and many others personally don't feel like you've been available for our school community in the same way that you've been available for your other liaison schools. And I know that there may be reasons why. And I just would say, if you continue to act as a liaison for Lake Elmo, I would encourage you to reach out to the school and to the community and mend those broken relationships and build those relationships back. And that's really it.
How much time do we have?
Denise and Bob, have we, have there been conversations already about how plans to move forward, what Allison was talking about earlier, about, about moving forward positively and really being intentional about bringing our community together? Have there been talks?
Some of the things that we've heard from the community who have spoken out, and she pointed a little bit earlier, Allison, who have been quiet for a number of reasons have come forward and said, "How do we move forward together, hope, optimism, growth, and be able to do some really good work?" There are amazing things that our kids are doing. We're going to see a couple of them and hear from them in a little bit. And we are really committed to working with our communities and having those conversations, whether they're small groups and coffee, or that there is a plan to be able to bring together and work with our principals about what do we want our schools to be, what's important, how do we, how do we build on the bridge to excellence? How do we come together to be a really strong district and keep our momentum moving forward? Because it's, it's been really tough for everyone. Everyone in this room, everyone within the district has been impacted in some way. And so we are intentional on what to be, and I'm sure the, hope that the board would be in the same position to say, "Now, how do we heal and come together and all support that?" Because I think in the end, that's what we want. We want our kids to grow and be strong and, you know, grow up in a community that really values diverse opinions and works together. So, yes, and we, part of this is, you know, we have this week some meetings about how we might want to do that in a small scale and then a large scale. We'll be sharing those at our board retreat. That's part of our board retreat next week.
Great. And I, I think one thing that's been helping shape my perspective is a couple weeks ago, when Eric shared his plan with us at the, at the learning session, and there was this slide about why does everybody see things from a different perspective? And I think that's how a lot of us are feeling, how, how can, we see it so differently. But I think once we can realize that we do, and then, and then it helps to come together at different sides and really try to understand where we're all coming from. That's my hope, that we can do that. And I think as, as parents see that they're really valued and what, what is important, you know, what, what is it about your schools that is important to you that we can bring to wherever your child's going to be? I think, I think those will be good first steps, but it's very much my desire to see us come to a good place.
Me, too. Behave like we want our children to behave, so.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Pelletier.
Oh, Jennifer Pelletier. Which I don't know, oh, sorry.
Hi there. I just want to preface this with, I'm a crier, and this is an emotional topic, so I'm going to try not to get too upset, but I can't promise that I'm not going to start crying. I just have three kind of main things, I guess, I wanted to discuss. First of all, the comments that I've, I've been hearing about the silent majority not speaking up. I think there's some merit to that, or hearing that the silent majority is a myth. I'll tell you what, I think, I think the silent majority just doesn't want to speak up, because they feel as badly as these families that have kids at these schools that are closing. These are my son's teammates. These are friends of my daughter. And we, I think what has happened with the polarization in this district is, we feel terrible about it. We, and we actually may benefit, and we secretly think, you know, this could really be good for us. But do we want to get in front of all these people and say, "Yay, we could benefit?" No, because we feel bad. These are our friends. And I think that component is missing. And I implore both of you, because I, first of all, commend you for sticking to your vote and believing in your convictions, both of you. But I also would like to charge you to think about that, and think about the fact that the people that may benefit feel every bit as bad as these families that are missing their schools and losing their schools. And I can tell you, I'm from one of, I, my kid goes to one of the schools that's closing. He, he attends the GATE program at Oak Park. And I haven't met a parent, maybe it's the luck of the draw, I haven't met a parent who said they were upset about it, because they actually thought, you know, this could be a really good opportunity. We don't even have a leader in the GATE program right now, you guys. We don't, it's, it's a program that's out there with four instructors, and there's no staffing, there's no leadership there, because they cut that. So I guess I just really, I just really want to express that, you know, I don't want to admit that we could benefit, because I can't stress enough how badly we feel. And to hear the litigation, it's hurtful. It's hurtful, because we're all in this together. And I want you guys, I'm begging you guys to, to fight that, to just say, you know what? Let's not do that. This is painful for all of us, everyone, every last one of us. You know, and talk about Lake Elmo Elementary, I'm going to, I'm going to go there. I, I'm passionate about the school. I love the school. I'm looking at these people here, and, you know, look, it's a school of 800, just shy of 800 kids, right? I know these smaller schools, Withrow Marine in particular. I know that the sentiment and the concern is that, you know, what happens if the education, they're not going to get the same education? I understand. I get it. I, if I were them, I'd, I'd be like, you know what? I'd be afraid. I have, I have an 11th grader at the high school right now who went all the way up at Lake Elmo Elementary. She had teachers in this room sitting here. She had an IEP at Lake Elmo for speech. She has over a 4.0 at the high school, over a 4.0. This kid is stellar. She's from an 800 kids school. And I just, I don't want us to be small-minded. I want us to be mackerel. I want us to think big. So the school, so talk about, I guess, the last, last thing I wanted to touch upon, you know, what makes up a community? I, I don't believe a building makes a community. I never have. I, I believe it's the people within it that make up a community. It's not a building, and I know this hurts, and I'm not discounting it. I know this hurts. But I just believe that we're stronger than that, and these teachers in this district are phenomenal, and I'm proud to be here. And, you know, final comment, with regards to the administration, and the horrible attacks I hear in the comments, and it's unbearable to see, it's unbearable for my kids, they see it, you know, they are, they're online, and they see these comments, and it's embarrassing. As a mother trying to teach her daughter and son how to behave, it's unbearable. And we've, we've had enough. We've had enough turnover with our administrators, you know? Enough's enough. Let's just find a way to be strong, take care of our community, and let's just find a way to just keep our administration together and go forward. Thank you.
Now, it's Kathy Salzman.
I'm Kathy Salzman, and I live in Woodbury, and I'm also a resident of 834. And I don't want to start crying either, but I remember when my kids went through school here, they loved being a pony. They absolutely loved it, and they still are so excited about, you know, the district, the friends they've made here who are friends for life. And one of the challenges, I think, that we have, I want to talk about challenges and opportunities. One of the challenges is that, you know, last Thursday, I witnessed and others personally saw incredible passion, and parents who cared deeply about their kids and want the best for their kids. And I felt that passion. I know you've heard from me on times, on different issues, and I've sometimes challenged you, and we've had spirited discussions. We also saw a very, I don't want to, I want to say, a darker side of our community, where I felt division. And I all, and I only felt comments about kids, but I also felt comments about communities of those people who live there. We're 18 communities, whether we live in Withrow or Marine, or Oak Park Heights, or Afton or Woodbury. When I saw the kids at the hockey tournament, they were all ponies. No one said, "Oh, you live there, you live there," or, you know, "Why are you in our district?" They're kids, they come to school, and they're friends. So what I want to pose to you is then the opportunity, is that, this is to all the school board members in the room, I feel like I'm just talking to you, but I hope you're all listening, is that the governance model in Stillwater is set up so all of you are elected as at-large members. In some districts, I think in Minneapolis, I think in Afton, or I think in Anoka, there may be other communities, maybe Osseo, where school board members are elected to represent a specific geographic area. And that's because in, I think, Anoka, you have different communities, so you might represent, or at least they used to, a certain area, be it, you know, Coon Rapids or Champlin. I know in Minneapolis, you record, you represent the north side, you know, the south side, the southwest area, and they also have at, an at, an at-large member. But when all of you were elected, you were elected to represent the entire district. And that doesn't mean that you're going to sometimes differ, like which, which policies you agree with. But the thing is that every member of this community should feel that you are listening and hearing them and thinking about all kids. So what I would challenge you, and I think that, you know, in hearing the other speakers tonight, I reflected on that the fact is that as, as elected officials, you have incredible leadership opportunities. As an elected official, you can do amazing things. You can listen to people. You can also challenge them. You can present, you know, the information to them that sometimes, you know, the public could have access to but isn't always hearing. I will use an example. There were some situations, and I know you can't respond to this, but people ask, "Why are we building a school in Woodbury? I mean, why Woodbury?" And in fact, I respond to people and said, "Because there's people who live in Woodbury who pay taxes and are part of 834." And I also remind them that they bring a very strong commercial industrial base with them that everybody benefits from, whether or not you want to live there. All those stores and all that development is helping lower everyone else's taxes. So, I mean, being able to correct small things like that, I think, would be really, really helpful. But most importantly, I think that the greatest opportunity that you have right now is to work with staff, but also as school board members, to find a way to heal, to bring together, to reconcile this community and this greater community. It's not 18 separates, but it is the Stillwater School District. When I moved here, when you heard about Stillwater, it was a lighthouse school district. People in St. Paul talked about, "Oh, the Stillwater School District, they're doing amazing things." When I found out, in driving through a development, I wasn't thinking about living in Woodbury, but when I heard it was in the Stillwater School District, I was there. When there were efforts, two years later, by the county auditor to separate districts, we mobilized, and we came, and, and residents showed up and says, "No, we want to be in the Stillwater District. Farmers many years ago chose to be in the Stillwater School District." So I just hope that you will take this opportunity to work with people in this community who are saying, "We're here. We want to be about all kids. We totally realize that there are, there have been painful decisions. There will be more to come. But what can we do to heal so that every child feels welcome here, but most importantly, every child receives an incredible education that every child achieves?" So I offer my support to you, and what can I do? I'm not a parent, but I have an investment in this community, and I want to be part of trying to bring people together again. So people look to us and don't read about us, but they say again, "Stillwater, that lighthouse school district that really focuses on every child."
Thank you. And I think, if you guys, do you have anything?
No, I just welcome your, your willingness, Kathy, to do that, because I think it's going to take many people within our community to stand up and say that they're willing to do that. And that is our intention, is to have a really strong school district for every kid going forward for many years to come.
And I, I agree, too. And I think it starts with, it starts with us, and then I think for every one of us in the room, and that's been on social media, what step can I take to move toward that healing? What can I do? What is there out there who, you know, because we all have friends who fall on both sides, so how can we? And I, there is, there have been so many people who want that and are willing to move toward that, so it's my hope that we can get there.
Well, and I think that votes have been taken, but I do believe that everybody has great respect for all of our school board members, for everything that you have given over the years, or years, or one year or two years. You know, to make a commitment to make this school district strong. Mike, you, you, I've known you before, you ran for office, and I know how incredibly committed you are to every child in this district, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my dad's black, my mom's white, and I have to say, I saw some of the comments on the social media, and it brought me back to when I was a child, okay? And I want you to know, it's like, oh, here we go again. And with my own kids, what I told them, I said, you know what, I want you to see this, because in life, people, you know, some people are gonna say unkind things to you, but you're gonna have to be able to stand up to them. So I let them know what was going on. And you know, my thing is, the way I look at it, I think it's good that it has finally surfaced, because I have lived in this district for 15 years, and there's the undercurrent of these bigoted ways. And my thing is, like, okay, finally it's out, so that we can actually deal with it, instead of acting like, oh, you know what, we're just so pristine, and we're just so righteous, we don't got any problems here. And you know what, I have to tell ya, that is not true. And I think, you know what, and as a person, as a mixed racial woman, it really pisses me off to go through the same cycle again of, oh, you people are less than. I have to tell you, when I was in seventh grade, and I went to Cottage Grove, I was a student, but they put me in remedial, reading, because at that time, they were just like, oh, you know what, those color, you know, those black kids, those mixed kids, they don't know, they're not as smart. And so I was put in remedial, and they didn't even, and you know what, the teachers didn't even tell my parents, and then my parents found out, and they tried to pull me out of that class. So what I'm saying, I agree with what, um, the gentleman that said earlier, I don't want any committees, I don't want any of this lip service of like, oh, we're gonna do this, and, oh, we're gonna do that, because I've heard it all before. And you know what, I'm just like, okay, yeah, people are giving the lip service, but is it gonna happen? Are you actually gonna do it? Are you actually committed? Because I know, like, people were concerned, you, I mean, about the children, which I can understand, but my thing is, you know, particularly for kids of color, speaking of my children, you know what, I have these conversations with them in life. We talk about what's going on with Black Lives Matter, we go, we talk about, you know, what happened to Trayvon Martin. I mean, we have these conversations regularly, and I wanted them to know that even though we live in this place, that, yeah, they're still gonna, it may seem like it's perfect and beautiful, but you still have those undercurrents. And when, and, and I was telling them that you have to stand up, get your education, because I'll tell you, if you don't get it, you're gonna be pushed down. I mean, I'll tell you, in the state of Minnesota, we already know about the, the disparities between, um, particularly African Americans and American Indians. And so my thing is, if you're saying, like, you're gonna do something, I really do it. I don't wanna have any of this lip service of going, you know, all this dancing around and, and acting like things are all right, because I'm, I'm just glad it, it came out. And my thing is, in the past, this district, from my experience, protected some people's racism. And I'm just like, you know what, why protect it? Let it be known, so that we can deal with it. 'Cause I'll have to tell you, it's not fair to the kids to grow up in a, a place thinking, like, things are good, and then the underlying currents, things aren't. So my thing is, I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna be watching and see if you're actually serious about what you're saying, okay? 'Cause I have to say, over the time, you know, the things, I've been watching this whole thing very closely, and you know what, I mean, I've heard it before, but I'll believe it when it actually happens. So I want you to know, I'm gonna be watching, and I don't, I just don't want any more of this flowery talk, rainbow talk. I want it real.
So, talk about, what would that look like to you? How would you know if we were there?
Okay, well, I have to say, be, well, I went to the beyond diversity, and with that, I mean, people actually get down to the issues of racism and white privilege. And my thing is, that I think the leaders, everyone who works for the district and who is a representative of the district, they should go through that training. Because, see, my thing is, it's easy to talk about it, and it's easy to stay at one place, but my, eh, you need to go to a deeper level. So that's, that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Steven, I don't know.
We had a couple people who tried to sign up after the deadline, and I think they, a few of them are here, so if we had extra time and wanted to, we just wanted to make sure we honored the people who did sign up and that they were given enough time.
Do, are there others who wanted to speak?
Clayton, both Clayton and Steven had contacted us.
So why don't we do five minutes and see, does that sound, look at it sound like? So, Steven and I.
How many do we have?
It was Clayton and Steven, I believe.
So, Steven, do you wanna come?
Thank you. So, first I wanna express my gratitude to, I think many of the board members are here, for all the work that you do on behalf of the students and families of this school district. The work's never easy, and it's especially true during times of change. So, thank you to all of you. I wanna speak to you tonight briefly, humbly, on behalf of the principals of District 834. As principals, we recognize how fortunate we are to work with such amazing families, students, and staff. We consider ourselves lucky to be part of a district with such tremendous support. Great schools are defined by this type of strong commitment to our school communities throughout District 834. I'm not sure, for those of you who are part of this district, and I've had the good fortune of working in a number of different districts, just how strong that support is and what a difference it makes for our students. The principals are firmly committed to the hard work of now bringing all our learning communities together, maintaining and growing positive relationships, and continuing the very strong tradition of academic excellence with welcoming schools, in a safe environment that respects each and every person, every day. As we prepare students to compete in a global economy with 21st century skills, we recognize the tremendous value of diverse learning environments. So our role now as principals is not going to be easy, but that role is to work to unite us. We look forward to working with everyone in this community to engage in the very hard work that's ahead of us. And I have to say, we firmly believe in this school district, in all of our schools, in this community, in the leadership team we have, and also in the school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
but, um, and I, I just wanted to listen, but I, I, um, to, to kinda echo some of it from earlier tonight, of the, the racism and the socioeconomic piece, um, my component's a little different, um, but, but I think the common theme is listening and understanding. And, and I think it's something that is a gap that, that has happened through this process. And, and I, I would encourage that, that's what we're looking for i- in this. Within, uh, let, a day of the, of the vote, my wife was in the car with a friend getting a ride home with someone else, and, um, she was being yelled at for the choices we make for our child. She was being yelled at because they knew us as being not supportive of bold, and that we went to different schools. And when my wife said that we had toured Rutherford and Stonebridge, that tripped something in the person, to say, oh, a tour's enough. And, and it went on for my wife, where she couldn't help them understand that our, our daughter has an IEP, our daughter has sensory processing disorder, our, we, we have been in large school environments with our daughter for kindergarten and first grades, and we, we were intentionally seeking i- an environment, and it's not about a building, it's about an environment that, that worked for our daughter. And the open school concept wasn't working for us, or wasn't gonna work for us, from what, from what we could see, from everything we'd engaged in, and everybody knows, you know, what, how a, a school environment can impact a home environment and everything else. And what was missing in this communication, for one, it was, it was really saddening to me, and Denise, we had the conversation, that it was, it was a teacher that was yelling at my wife. But for two, it, it's the common theme, it's, it's listening, it's understanding. Like, I don't think that person would've started, continued to yell at my wife if they had asked more questions to understand how we got to where we were. And tha- that's what, that's what we need more of, and, and, and I wanna hear more of it from the administration too. Um, there was some feedback, Rachel, you reached out to me, thank you, there, there were a few other pieces that, that are, that are still missing, but those are the things, and those are the things I feel like I, I miss from the administration. Um, when, I, I feel like concerns and questions are dismissed. It, it, it happened in, in an effort of, um, re-enrolling our, our daughter, I mean, we had to, um, our younger daughter this last fall. We didn't feel heard, and we had to push and push to feel heard. And, and that's significant. Um, and, and I think, I, I don't, I, I shouldn't speak for others, but I, I, it sounds like a common theme for what others are saying, and, and, obvi- you look at me, I mean, I'm white as can be, um, so, so I can't un- understand reading hateful words, and I didn't see them, and sadly, I'm thankful I didn't see them, but I, I can't imagine, um, having to read, um, words of socioeconomic or racial impact. And I hope that is, I, I, I don't know where they were, but I, I hope the tone is not it came from an opposing view of bold or anything like that, um, 'cause, 'cause I can stand up here as someone who is, who didn't support bold and say, I don't know a racist or anti-socioeconomic or anti-high-performing family, I, I shouldn't say anti any of that, but I, I think you get my point, where i- it's not about separating kids or anything like that. And, and I'm really sorry that people witnessed that, um, in, in, and read that. Um, it's, it's something that we, we talk about actively with, with our, uh, fourth grader, of, um, what, what the world really is like, even though we are in a sheltered community. Um, and, and so it's, it's really sad for me to hear, but I think listening and understanding, just different perspectives, I, I think that's what's been missing through this whole process, and, and I think that's what has sometimes caused some of the escalation, uh, in it, and, and that's what I'd like to impart on everybody through this process. And I, I wasn't here last Thursday, I didn't get to say, thank you, Shelley, I was, I, I sat in a hotel room in Fargo, listening to everything go, happened, so, um, but I appreciate the ability to have candid conversation, and, um, for, for your listening, and, and Mike, for yours, um, y- you've been an advocate of our children when, when we have called on you, um, uh, in the, in the re-enrollment process and everything else, so, um, thank you for allowing me to have some time, even though I, I didn't get in 48 hours before, so, thank you.
So that's it, thank you all. Meeting starts in 15 minutes.